Sorry. I'm getting better at this, I promise. I did actually try. Yeah. Yep. So adequate notice of tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the following methods: through distribution of notice to the record, posting of the agenda on the school district website, and through Parent Square. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Lapira, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Okay. Ms. Choi?
Here.
Ms. Wilds? Dr. Meister?
Here.
Mr. Park? Mr. Zepka? Mr. Segal?
Here.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Molina?
Here.
Ms. Melvin? And then Mr. Lee?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. Also present are the superintendent, Dr. Gaitan, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Caramanos, and our student reps.
Okay, thank you. And so that brings us to item 1.4, "Public comments regarding agenda items only." Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name. Arthur. And address.
That's on. Arthur's at 125 RLDs. I have a bunch of things. Go quickly, and then some of them are going to be directed at Eric, who's not here, so I'll leave some papers and he can reply by email. Thank you for anyone who voted me. I was not running a campaign. I got eight votes and lost again. This is now the fourth time. But anyhow, this is regarding, a lot of it's regarding the agenda. The first thing, I'm going to go quickly on it. The first thing is on the agenda, under Personnel, 14-1 through 14-8. There was no hot link on there, so I could pull them up and see what they were. So I still have no idea what the the motion to approve Personnel 14.1 through 14.8 is. I'd like somebody to get back, or I'll leave these papers for somebody to get back. Because if I go through, there's 58 pages in that, in this, in this agenda, just so you all know. I don't know who really goes through it, but there's the detailed amount, there's 58 pages. It's a lot of stuff to go through. So when you hot link it, you want to pull it up and get the information. There was no hot link for that. The addendum to the collective negotiations agreement also, there was no hot link for that, so I have no idea what the addendum was. So it should be public information. Under LMS extra pay, it's had nothing to do with the people. It says $12,000 for extra pay. I don't know what extra pay is. I'm not saying they aren't entitled to it. I just don't know what it is. So I'd like to know what extra pay is and what justifies $12,000. On the bills, it shows payroll vendor and a lot of money. Now, I don't know if that means they're, we're paying them these amounts, or if that's the amount that they're paying on our behalf. I don't understand it. So I'd like an explanation as to what payroll vendor is. If that's the amount we're paying the vendor, then maybe we should look into doing payroll ourselves, because it's a lot of money. But I'd like an explanation. That's not one. Under the Facilities Report, it doesn't list all of the facilities. There's one facility missing. So, and there's obviously a cost to running that. So I'd like to know what that cost of that is also. And that facility is a facility that handles special services for the special needs people. So that is not on here, and it should be. At least the cost of operating it. There's a reduction in cost, which is great. I'd just like to know what it is regarding the the unisex bathroom that you're just building. It was budgeted at $73,500. It came in at $69,000. That's terrific. I'd like to know where the savings came from and how we came to that. Was it just in contingency, or was there an actual savings in the construction cost? Under school bus leasing, we leasing buses to Fort Lee for $125 per, per bus. Yet we're paying $20188 when we have to bus a kid, one kid, per, per diem rate of $20188 not to exceed the amount of $36,000, blah, blah, blah. The question is not the total amount. The question is why are we paying somebody $201 to bus a kid? And we're only getting $125 when we lease our buses to Fort Lee? Board District Goals. I think at one of the meetings I was here, you started talking about it. One of the goals, I think, was to support the strategic plan, which was great, but I never saw them. But I'm here, it shows your consent item, I believe, is you're going to the board and district goals. But again, no hot links, so I don't know what you decided. So I can't, I have no idea what they are. You're going to talk about it maybe later on, but I don't know whether, what they are, and I'd like to know what they are in advance. This is just a personal feeling. I'm not sure whether, how to attack it. We spend $411,000 a year to the county to send 36 Leoni kids to Bergen Academies. That's great. And I have no problem with sending kids to Bergen Academy. I have a problem with me paying part of the tuition, and the taxpayers paying part of the tuition to pay for them to go here, and then to pay for them to go over there. I think this should be tuition based. And I think the school board, and then we should pursue with the county saying we'll continue to let them qualify, let them go over there, and make it tuition based. Just like I sent my kids to Holy Angels, and I had to pay tuition to go to send them to Holy Angels, and I still had to pay my taxes to run the school system. So I object as a taxpayer making that payment. Just a personal, personal comment. And I think the last thing is there's Garmin Training Watches for the cross-country team. I don't object to that. The question is, are they personal? Do we buy them for each track, or will they be used for other runners? And will they go, have a lifespan beyond one year? Or is this going to be an annual thing where we're going to wind up buying the watches? If I'm over time, I'll finish in the second half. I think we we spent $35,000 moving the weight room. I'm not, I'm wondering if that went out the bid. If not, why not? That's an awful lot of money to move weights. And smart boards, we spent almost $40,000, and I can tell it may have been $58,000. I'm not sure about the, it says grades one to eight, but it doesn't specify smart boards directly above that. But it may have been smart boards also. I think smart boards are a great idea. It's just an awful lot of money to, to spend on that. And maybe we, if it went out to bid, great. If not, then why not? And I think that is, oh. Architectural Services for the month of October, $99,000. If we, if we have that kind of it. I know some of it's covered by reimbursements, insurance, but maybe it's something to think about. Maybe we need a district architect that we can hire and keep on staff, and have them here at the meetings, and they can take notes, and something to think about. So, but the October bill, the October bill is $99,000. It's an awful lot of money. And the last thing is on the strategic plan. And why I'm at the, at the, at the strategic meetings, I'm not sure if some of you went. Some of you didn't. And I brought up that I think it really should be beyond more than five years. And I'm going to give you a really good example of why it should be, we should be thinking longer than five years. 10, 12, 14 years ago, when Bernie was the superintendent, I'm not sure if anyone was on it. Were you, were you on it when Bernie was here? You weren't on it. Well, he ran a campaign. They had a leaking roof in the gym, and the roof needed to be replaced. But they put together this monstrous package, which I'm sure was a resume booster to get out of Leoni and show, "Look what I did." It was $22 million, okay? A $22 million capital budget. What got my attention was the replacement value in, on the agenda for the high school was $19 million. Now, when we're thinking long, we're going to spend $22 million replacing some equipment that maybe we need, maybe we don't need. But you can replace the whole freaking school for $19 million, which is $3 million less. So those are things you need to take into consideration on a long-range plan. You need to, and that's a 10-year thing. That's not a five-year thing. You got to plan it and think about it. Well, it's aging, it's crumbling. Maybe we should just replace the whole freaking school. So just something to think about financially, rather than dumping money into boat to keep it floating. That is all. Thank you for being patient and letting me go beyond.
Thank you, Arthur. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none?
Arthur, good to see you. Always, always. Democracy in action, Arthur. A few things. A lot of the questions that you brought up tonight are better suited in Mr. Tomassevich's domain. So I'm going to give a lot of those over to him. We'll get him a copy of the recording. We'll make it a point to review with you. He'll probably give you a phone call later this week to review these items with you. Because give those to me when you leave. I'll make sure that he gets those. So I'll speak to what I can speak to tonight. And I will, I will turn to Eric and let him speak to those when he has a chance to give you a phone call. A few things here. We did have a line item for district and board goals. We decided to hold off on those predicated upon tonight's presentation. Tonight's presentation, the conversation that was held at the last meeting about board district goals, which we then wrote following that meeting for presentation tonight, ran somewhat contrary to what's going to, the board's going to discuss tonight in the board's self-evaluation. And so I believe that the committee never really had a chance to talk about it anymore. So we decided to, that will not be approved tonight. That will be pulled out, and that will, that will be tabled. Most likely, that will be a December meeting item. So there's nothing yet, so there's nothing that you missed. I would really like to have a chance to look with you at the agenda that you're seeing, because you talked about hot links. When you look online, the items that you're, you couldn't see are listed in the public viewing of the documents. I think you and I might want to have a conversation, look at it together, because those items were there. I looked while you were speaking. Many of the items that you referenced as being not available, I was able to see. I don't know if it's a setting on my end, but I definitely want to talk to you about that. And we can work that out for you. In regards to Bergen Academies and the cost, that is set by the county. I recognize as a taxpayer, you were voicing your concern. You did this in a previous meeting, too. You've mentioned it. I don't hesitate to remind the county at my displeasure of the fact that we pay taxes in multiple ways. And then on top of that, we have to pay a per pupil cost to the kids that go to the academies, which are wonderful programs. But the opinion that you shared are shared by many, many taxpayers. So, but that is something in which our hands are tied, and we have to follow what the, what the county provides out for us. We will definitely, we're pleased to see about the savings in unisex bathroom at the high school. We're glad that that, Eric will explain the school bus leasing. In regards to the Garmin watches, the Garmin watches that we have, those are multiple-use watches. Think of it as any other piece of equipment that we have. It's a, it's a watch that's not unlike the one that I have. The students use them for the course of their training. They're very, very powerful devices. And then they're turned into the coach, and they become like a volleyball net, or a football, or a piece of equipment. They get turned in, and so students certainly are not being gifted Garmin watches courtesy of the district. Very powerful devices. Everything else, I'm looking at it here. We will circle back with you and with Eric here. I'm going to, we'll let Eric talk that. And so, and we'll let Mr. Tomassevich speak to those other items, too. He'll walk through all those with you. Okay? So thanks for being here. And any other questions come up, please let us know. Thanks.
Okay, so that brings us to item 1.5, called Public Presentations. We do have a presentation for the self-evaluation results for the school board. Dr. Meister, is that? That's you?
How do we drive this?
There's the laptop. That works. Can you hear me? All right, so these are the results of our self-assessment of the board's performance. And so how did we do this? We used, the New Jersey School Boards Association makes available a survey that boards can, can utilize to assess their performance. And it, the survey covers these broad areas. So planning, policy, student achievement, finance, board operations, board performance, board superintendent relations, board staff relations, board and community relations. So those nine areas are covered in the survey. We sent this, the survey was made available to the board members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and board secretary. We got seven responses back on the survey. And so the responses are shown in the histogram. So the way to sort of orient yourself and read this histogram is, for example, student achievement, and the color coding matches, of course. So student achievement, which is the, the blue, third blue bar there, seven people. So all, all the respondents on the survey rated student achievement as vital. Okay? Versus board and community was very important. Four people rated that very important. And then three people rated that as right? So that when you add the bars across a particular color, it should add up to seven. So this, so the beginning of this survey is really surveying, what does the board think is important? Okay? And then what we'll do as we move through the survey is we'll drill down on each of these areas, and board members opine on what we think our performance is in those particular areas. So you, of course, you know, the board doesn't think any of, they're somewhat important. They're either vital or very important, all of these areas. Some minor differences. I guess six people thought board superintendent relations were very important, but not vital. So this is the board's opinion on, on how we're doing from a planning perspective. So now when we drill down on these, there's specific questions to the area, which you can see here. And we'll put this on our website so that, you know, the public can, can view the results. Can you see? Or am I in the way? We're good? And so now, how can we, how can we rate these? Commendable, good, adequate, unsatisfactory, and not observed? So this is kind of interesting, right? So a lot of people think we're, you know, the respondents think we're doing adequately with, in this area. It's not, it's not all commendable and good. All right? So there's opportunity for improvement from a planning perspective. Terms of and four people didn't observe broad community input, established a direction-wide mission and multi-year plan for the education. I think one of the reasons we're seeing this as, as not being commendable or good is, is because we're in the process right now of developing our long-term strategic plan. So I think when we do this next year, we should see a lot of improvement in this particular area. I take questions on this, too, by the way, if anybody wants to.
Yeah, I would say it's the number one common, right? Let's go back to the broad community, right?
Yeah, broad community input. I mean, we're in the process of collecting that right now, right?
But I think, like, how I read that is, like, when I look out into the audience right now, I don't see broad community input. That's how I, well, not the strategic plan, and we reach out for that.
Right.
But I, when I answered that.
Yes, that's how you interpreted it. Yeah. Right. Arthur represents the case.
He makes up, yeah. I would like to see, you know, 20, 30, Arthur.
Oh, so then there's also, so that's about the board, right? This is like how the respondents think about the board. Then there's also a section about how do we think we're doing as individuals for each of these areas? I'm not going to go through all the, all of these. They'll, they'll be available on the website. For the interest of time, we'll, we'll skip about the board members. That's really about how do you think you're doing personally, right? As a board? Right. Yeah. 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 So policy, again. One person thought we're commendable across these. Actually, it's not necessarily the same person, though. It could be one person that thinks we're commendable and operates as a policymaking body. And then somebody else could think we're commendable on number two there. Not necessarily the same person. But again, some opportunity for improvement, right? Getting rated as adequate on several of these. Mostly good, but just got to point that there. Both the board members. Student achievement, definitely some opportunity that the board members think there's some opportunity for us to improve here in terms of how we're addressing student achievement. And I think maybe, Kim, this is what you're saying about some of this came as a bit of a surprise, right? Requires yes, that's the one that's most, that's rated, four, four people rated that as adequate, but not not, obviously not good or commendable. I mean, obviously, nothing is getting rated unsatisfactory on any of these, right? We're doing a decent job across the board, but some opportunity to do better here. And then, yeah. Finance tends to get rated stronger. Hopefully you agree with that, Arthur. So exercising oversight and providing policy and guidelines and parameters. One person actually wrote, we do have one unsatisfactory here, though, right? Reviews understands and evaluates all financial reports to ensure that all educational dollars are used in an efficient and effective manner. We have to discuss this, of course, as a, as a group, too. I mean, you got to be careful you don't get too far down in the weeds. You could spend an awful lot of time on that. But maybe some opportunity for us to get a little bit further down into the, into the details. I think that's the one that's either, it's either and now that's, yeah. It does, which is a little bit weird. There may be a mistake there in tabulating the data. And I did the tabulation, so you can blame me if, which is why I'm giving this presentation as well. Operations, here we're actually rate fairly highly, pretty strong. This, I guess, isn't too, too much of a surprise. I mean, you know, we have, as a, this is board operations, right? I mean, we have, we have, I think, pretty robust board operations. We rate ourselves pretty good on our performance as well. It's a self-assessment. We, it's not the public, although they do keep electing us, so. But a lot of, interestingly, right? A lot of commendables on our, on our performance. Superintendent relations, Board of Ed superintendent relations, commendable and good. One adequate on regular dialogue on progress toward district goals and objectives. Student achievement and feedback on performance. I think that kind of ties into the, that student achievement one as well, where there's opportunity for, for improvement. That's about me. I keep pointing it there, and I got to point it over here. Staff relations. Pretty good, pretty solid on staff relations. Not quite as good as with the superintendent, but I think we don't have as much interaction with the staff as well, so this isn't really surprising. And then the community. Oh, and I messed up the horizontal. It's the same categories. Commendable, good, adequate. Opportunity, I think the board members think there's opportunity for improvement from the Board of Ed community interactions as well. We don't typically get a huge turnout here, so it's hard to know how we're going to address that, but but at least there's an opportunity there. And then we actually asked for, you know, any sort of specific challenges. This maybe gets a little bit toward what you were speaking to, Sid, although there's, there's an opportunity to go through and pull out some sort of key themes from the, from the actual questions. But you'll see some themes come up in just, in, in the sort of ad hoc, what are, what are the board members think are, are challenges, particularly with regard to student achievement? So you can read them. There's no surprises here. Cell phone use. I think that's a, a pretty common topic of discussion with a lot of boards and school districts. You'll see a few items around gifted and talented programs. A couple of people brought that up, yeah. Two and six. These are taken verbatim, by the way. I didn't summarize them. Supporting students at LHS that aren't in an academy program. An opportunity to develop some enhancements for them. Took a verbatim. Yeah, item four is also around that theme, right? I think that's more around ACS. I think that's where, where the more the, the opportunity is. I kind of like number eight there as well, personally. Not everybody's going to necessarily go up to college. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. That's a good way to look at it. And this is around through what areas from a board and govern, board governance perspective, or what opportunities are there for us for improvement? So getting just, you know, specific comments. Looks like we could use some more training on board docs. You know, I could personally. Always a challenge to log in. Yeah, there's some comment on, you know, policy, setting policy. And that's, that one's, I think, a little bit tricky, because you get into issues of quorum. These are more, I think, for us, rather than kind of public concern. I mean, it's interesting for them, but these comments, I think, are more useful for the board specifically. Yeah, so that's it. Any comments, questions? Thoughts?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I guess we'll, we'll put this, we'll make this available on the on our website. I went through that pretty fast.
Okay.
And we'll put a counter on here.
We need unique clicks. Unique clicks. Non-board member or regular attendee clicks as well would be helpful. No, thank you for that presentation. That's good information. I do echo what Sid had mentioned, that it'd be good to try to extract some kind of action items out of it. But, but thank you very much. It's, it's good and useful information. So that brings us to item 2.1, board member comments on agenda-related items. Any comments from our board members? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to our student representative comments on any agenda-related items. Okay, thank you.
There's not an agenda.
These are comments for just on the agenda items.
See, that's why we score ourselves high. Yes. Absolutely.
You saw them, we saw it before.
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to item 3.1, approval of consent agenda items.
That brings us to item 3.1, approval of consent agenda items, which are all marked on the agenda with an asterisk.
But we're pulling the goals, right?
Yes. So as you'll note, on the agenda, item 7.5 are board and district goals, based on the message you heard before from Dr. Gaitons. And based on the commentary from Arthur, we are pulling that from the consent agenda, so that is. We're looking, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve consent to agenda items with the exception of item 7.5, which is being pulled.
Motion.
Motion, Dr. Meister, second. Joe? You got that? Can I roll call, please? Oh, sorry. Does anyone have any items that they'd like to pull for discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Okay. Figure out how to do this. Ms. Choi.
Yes.
Dr. Meister.
Yes.
Ms. Molina.
Yes, but abstaining on anything ACS.
Mr. Park. Mr. Zepka. Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson. Ms. Wilds. Vice President Melman. And President Lee.
Yes.
Okay, motions carry.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our administrative reports. Dr. Gaitons.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Dr. Meister, for that presentation. I have to give the board a compliment. I've worked with multiple boards almost 15 years now, and this is the first time I've been in a presentation that a board that I discussed itself evaluation with the public. So I think the board has to be complimented for that level of introspection and thought, so thank you for that. Various items that I want to go over today. I want to thank you. Thank you to, congratulations to also Mr. Eric Grau from the community for winning the open Board of Ed seat through a write-in candidate. I also want to give special thanks to Ms. Norine Wilds, who is leaving after this term for the board. She has been well-served and we appreciate it. We will have a special notice of that at our December meeting, so you have to come, okay? You have to come to December meeting. We we had a very, very good September, October in our schools, a strong start, strong student body. The energy that we finished up in June is returning for this school year. We want to thank our families for their continued support at home. We hear that time and time again. How our families, they emphasize the importance of school. They make sure the homework, they get the children to school on time. We're very grateful for that. October next to March are two of the longest months of the school year, where there's almost no interruptions in those two months. And November and December have a lot of busyness, busyness with the teachers convention last week. We have two weeks to Thanksgiving holiday and then all the various holidays and the concerts and that. And we encourage everyone, including our student reps, to do a great job. Keep the focus on your academics and tell your your friends about that. To our families at home, please pay close attention on that. I do want to call out some individual accomplishments. Our students, once again, excelled at the Bergen County Honor Choir tryouts. Mr. Dunn sent the following update. LHS had 27 students who were selected for Bergen County Choir. Our previous best was 24. Thirty-two Bergen County schools participated with 400 total attendees. 200 were accepted with 208 were accepted with 27 coming from Leonia. The next closest was the town of Primus with 17. LHS makes up over 10% of the total participants. So congratulations to our students, and we are glad to give them recognition here and what they're doing out in the world. I want to thank our to our fall student athletes for their hard work and effort. They give us so much to be proud of and grateful for the willingness to work hard, to set a strong example and represent Leonia so well. Congratulations to LHS 10th grader Dominique Cameron for being named the NJ Female Athlete of the Week. Once again, another wonderful accomplishment, and thank you to Mr. Prada and all the work that he does with our athletic department, and all of our coaches, and especially our athletes who work so hard. I also want to thank you, the business office and the Buildings and Grounds Department, for working diligently to replace the high school gym floor ahead of schedule. About two weeks early, it came in there. We took it very quickly. We are grateful for that. Want to point out that strategic planning session number three, the final one, is in this room on on this seven o'clock this coming Thursday. All are invited and attendance at either the first two sessions is not a requirement. As of this afternoon, 35 staff and community members have signed up for Thursday night. We want to thank our the school boards for facilitating our work. We want to end on a closing note. We want to thank all of our veterans for their active military service yesterday. The 11th was Veterans Day. And we want to wish all of our families a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for your continued support. One last thing on the agenda, it says 11:12 for the strategic planning. It is actually 11:14. I'll make that change now online. It is the 14th. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Gaitons. Okay, normally we will be moving on to Mr. Thomassevich's report, but in his absence, we will move on to item six, which is committee reports, and we'll start with our student representatives.
Starting this this week, the students got their PSAT scores back. And also because of the fall sports ending, the winter sports registrations have opened up, so that includes basketball, wrestling, bowling, and swimming. And tonight is Academy Open House, and as well this week is Spirit Week, Spirit Week, which includes PJ Day, which was Monday, Twin Tuesday. Tomorrow will be Rhyme Without Reason. Thursday will be Throwback Thursday and Jersey Friday. And also on Friday, it will be Homecoming with the theme Tangled from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM with pre-sale at being $15 and outdoor being $20. Also on November 20th, the Cookie Wars will be hosted by the Culinary Academy.
Thank you. Just want to add to that, that tomorrow's theme was the, Dr. Cameron and I have been dragged into taking part tomorrow morning through at the door. You have to guess what our theme is tomorrow morning for Spirit Day. And I do want to point out that for the Cookie Wars, all board members did receive invitations, so I just want to emphasize that invitations will be forward. Well, I'll make sure you get them, so have no fear, okay? Have no fear. Invitations are, if not already, they will be forthcoming. Have no fear. Ms. Lapierre, you too will get your own invitation. Thank you for your hard work.
Sounds like lots of really fun stuff coming up. Thank you very much. Our next committee, the Board of Ed Practices and Principles. Kim?
We did, we held an asynchronous meeting due to scheduling conflicts. But the bulk of what we were preparing for was the board's self-evaluation survey that Steve presented, so thank you, Stephen, for putting in all the work to do that and for compiling all the results. We're going to take one more final look at the board and district goals before we approve them, and we do have new board member training documents in our shared drive, so we'll be accessing those as we welcome our new board member.
Thank you very much. Okay, 6.3 Buildings and Grounds, Joe?
We haven't met. We're going to schedule a meeting soon. I know Eric sent some stuff, Dan. I don't know if I should read all this because I don't know too much of the background of where we're at with. Yeah, it just sounds like a lot of punchless work and stuff going on right now. Okay, so that's it. We'll we'll meet soon and have a recap after that.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 6.4 Education.
Our committee met earlier today and talked about a few different topics, including a virtual book club for faculty with three books that are very relevant to teaching. We talked about calibrating assessments with the Edgewater School District so that, you know, we can understand the needs and of kind of our incoming students into the middle school from from Edgewater and make sure they're able to integrate as as well as possible. We talked about doing a needs assessment for English Language Arts, focused mostly on grammar instruction and language acquisition. And finally, we spoke about a world languages survey that's going to go out to students in grades six to 10 as we think about potentially adding another language to our our high school language offerings in the future.
And that brings us to 6.5 Finance and Planning, which is myself. So we actually, we have not met recently, but obviously we've been busy with on a monthly basis with the strategic planning meetings that are open to the public. And we will be meeting actually with the beginning of the budgeting season coming up, so please enjoy the time off you have right now because we're going to be very busy coming up once that starts, and hopefully Eric will recover quickly and be very healthy as he comes back to prepare for that. And that finally leaves us with policy, which I don't think we've had any new policy issued recently.
No, we haven't met recently and, but of course, board members are always encouraged if there are questions about our current policies or future ideas or revisions to come bring into our attention so we can, you know, review them as the as the broader committee.
Thank you. So that brings us to New Business. Okay, so we.
You can do them all as one.
Okay, so we have three items for New Business. Items 10.1, which is a field trip request, 10.2 Care+Bergen for substance abuse testing services, and 10.3 tolling agreement. 10.4 is the cumulative of those three items. Can I have a motion and a second on item 10.4? Motion, Sid, second, Marine, and does anyone have any items? Would anyone like to pull any for discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we roll call, please? There we go. All right. Ms. Choi.
Yes.
Dr. Meister.
Yes.
Ms. Molina.
Yes, but abstaining on anything ACS.
Mr. Park.
Yes.
Mr. Zepka.
Yeah.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yeah.
Ms. Wilds.
Yeah.
Vice President Melman. And President Lee.
Yes.
Okay, motions carry.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 11.1 Public Comment Regarding Non-Agenda Items. Anyone from the public question to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and address. Okay. Sorry. There'll be a curve there. We'll move. We'll move on to, sorry, you missed your chance. Move on to item 12.1 Board Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Any board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board and the district for recognizing Diwali the first time as a school holiday on November 1st, and just continuing that tradition, the LHS South Asian Club is hosting a Diwali event next Friday at LMS at, I believe, at 5:30 to 8 o'clock, and there'll be some food there. There'll be some cultural events there. Encourage all of you to come in. It's again, next Friday, the LHS hosting it at LMS in the cafeteria on the 22nd. But I will extend my thanks again and appreciation.
Thank you very much. Okay, and I just wanted to also share quickly, so a few of the board members and our administrators were able to attend the SBA workshop last month. Great event. I'm actually going to send a recap. I was inspired by one of our fellow Edgewater board members, who actually is a new board member for them, that wrote basically a summary of their experience in the various seminars they attended. My hope is that you'll read it. It will intrigue you and pique your interest and maybe, you know, get you to go in a future year. I I actually stopped counting, but over four days, there are several hundred seminars that are provided, so. I mean, I can't, I cannot overstate how how much of a benefit it is, and it has been to my experience as board member. I mean, we're here as a Board of Education, you know, for the education for our students, and, you know, our education ourselves should also be continuing. It's a great opportunity to learn more, to collaborate with other school board members. There are anything and everything you want to know about school districts and school boards, there is a seminar that they're holding. On top of that, the vendors that work with our districts, as well as other vendors that we don't work with, they're all exhibiting there as well, so it's a great opportunity to see and meet, you know, see the faces of the people that are providing services to our students and our and our faculty. And if you aren't happy with, you know, something you've seen being, you know, served or provided in our school district, then it's an opportunity for you to check out potentially other vendors. Obviously, that information flows through, you know, the superintendent's office, but it's a great opportunity for you to see firsthand. There's other lots of other presentations going on. There are state-level state-level presentations that are being given, so, you know, what's going on with this with the the Department of Education with the state. There's also county-level meetings as well, so lots of opportunities to to do that, and plus, you know, you can spend some time with fellow board members and our administrators outside of the board setting, so it's just a great, great environment. I really encourage you to go. I'll be, I actually was working on my report earlier. I'll hopefully have it done by the end of this week and send it out to all of you. And by all means, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask and and look to your schedules for next year and try to reserve some time if you can. I don't know if they publish it. Usually it's the second or third week of October. Okay, any other board member comments?
Yeah, I do. Is it on? Can you hear me? Oh, okay. I was at the Academy Open House at LHS just before this meeting. I was only able to attend the the general presentation in one session because I had to be here by 7:30, and we happened to, we chose STEM Academy session. I was, it was not my first time. I was there last year, but this year I felt that we are growing every year in terms of the the way we prepared, and even as a community, it was very well-attended. Lot of students and families attended, and STEM Academy, we couldn't really hold all the interested students in in that one single room. But all the students are very serious, serious about attending that session, very interested. And the presentation by advocate teacher, I was so amazed, number of AP courses that we're offering today. I knew we were growing the list, but it was maybe I was just catching up with how we were doing, but I was very pleasantly surprised. Just the whole atmosphere, that excitement and expectation and the looking for challenges, and I I was very, very excited about the whole whole thing, and it was well-run, and I could see a lot of work was put together by the school administrators, and even some of the students showed up in the laboratory gowns and the the whole day was just attractive enough, like more than attractive to the eighth graders, just, you know, kind of trying to get the glimpse of what's waiting ahead of them, so. I was just happy to share that excitement. Too bad it was short, cut short, and I just wanted to share, well, we were certainly on the right track, right direction, and also saw some of the self-assessment, some of potential goals that we identified for student achievements, especially the point about what about the students who don't know like exactly what they're interested in, the other 50%. So we are questioning ourselves with the right questions, and this is really good. Good for me and good for all of us, just to share that.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry you had to come here and miss the rest of Open House. Okay, any other board comments? Okay, seeing none. Okay, so we, next item is 13.1, which is a closed session, so those people on YouTube and our guests here in attendance tonight, we do appreciate you coming and our student representatives, but we'll need about 30 minutes. We'll be in closed session for approximately 30 minutes, after which time we will come back and then take a vote on personnel and move into adjournment. So for those of you online, if you do want to wait, it could be approximately 30 minutes before we come back. Thank you. Oh, can I have a, sorry, a motion and a second? Motion, Dr. Meister, second. Isaac, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Okay, motion. Okay, motion. Hi, can I have a motion on item 14.9, which is Authorization for Personnel Items 14.1 through 14.8? Motion, Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Zepka? Can we have roll call please? Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yes, but I'm standing on ACS.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Zepka?
Yeah.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilds?
Yeah.
Vice President Melman?
Yeah.
And President Lee?
Yes.
Your motion passes?
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Motion, Sid, second. Isaac, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned at 9:15 PM.
I'm voting against it. I want to stick around here longer.